Good morning, and thank you for joining us this morning for our City Council Budget Session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Right.
Here.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
Moundsville.
Here.
Ortega.
Here.
Stevens.
Glass.
Here. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Two is Building Department. Richard Bigelow, building official, will give a presentation on the following topics. Building Department, Property Abatement Fund, Custodian, City Hall Facilities. Richard?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time today to listen to our presentations. We're starting off with the Building Department presentation. Here's our organizational chart. We currently have two building permit texts, electrical inspector, plumbing and mechanical inspector, and a building mechanical inspector. Our salary projections have gone down a little bit due to retirements. We're asking a 3% increase on our operational budget. Building Department just has a real slim operating budget, and then our employees over the years haven't changed. Our statistics over the year, this was a very good year building-wise this last year. We've been up in permits issued, inspections completed. We had a big increase on single-family homeless built. We went from 101 to 150. Our construction value went from $55 million and some change to $91 million, and our fees collected, we went from $830,000 to $1,082,000.
Richard, is there a typo?
Is that FY '21 a correct number?
Okay, we've got two questions, Rick and then Claudia.
Same question. Is that a typo on your fiscal year 2021 building permits?
$3,400, or not $3 million.
$34,118.
Yeah. Just not sure.
I'm on the wrong slide.
It's very top one.
At the top left, yeah.
Yeah, that is a typo. I apologize.
What should it be?
It should be 3,000, or yeah, 3,418.
Okay.
There's an extra one. Sorry.
Right.
Look at these a million times, and then you overlook something simple.
Right.
So, but we did have an increase in permits issued. And then for our departments' improvements, we're asking, and it's been talked about a little bit before, we're asking to permit, to purchase a new permitting software called Community Development. It was part of the Central Square Navaline product that the city currently uses, so the support's not going to change. So the purchase price with the annual subscription is the 207,153, and then after that, IT will pay the annual subscription fee of around $20,000, which is a decrease roughly between, we're estimating between $3,000 to $6,000 a year. Excuse me. It's a very efficient and user-friendly software that will benefit multiple city departments, mainly planning and engineering. It has a GIS overlay in it that can map out historical districts, floodplains, and other information along those lines. It is accessible 24 hours a day, so that contractors are out in the field, they can purchase the permits right there in the field, they can also schedule their inspections on the field and get notifications on when the inspections are completed. They get an email notification if it's passed or if there's corrections required. And it's just important for the city to stay up to date with technology. It's constantly changing, building sciences are changing, and this is just one way that we can help the contractors make their job easier.
Josh?
Do you anticipate permitting fees to change, or some sort of rate study to go into account after this price?
So we haven't changed the fees, from what I've been told, for the Building Department in about 20 years. So our permit fees haven't changed, except for last year, we did a 35% residential plan review fee.
So it's possible that we could review those fees after purchasing of this product to kind of see, are we in line with market value, and especially with this purchase?
Yeah, we could, we could go off of ICC, the International Code Council.
What we would have to do, if we purchased this and we did not have fees attached to it, we would need to wait for the next fiscal year so that we could put that in the fee resolution, if I understand correctly.
I think we just did an amendment.
We just, we just did that.
Or do you do an amendment to that?
Would you like me to address that, Mayor?
Please.
We can do an amendment. We typically try to do them once a year, so it's not confusing for the public, but an amendment is a possibility.
Okay, all right.
But if we were to increase our fees, it would be at next year's budget.
Okay.
So, you know, right now, like the slide before showed, you know, the operating budget for the Building Department's around $750,000. We brought in last year $1,080,000. So the building permit fees, even though we're part of the general fund, were fee-driven. So it, you know, it's, the builders are paying for us to, basically to get the software and get new vehicles and stuff like that.
Rick?
You mentioned this is a 24-hour online that others outside the city could use. Is it available if someone needed to work from home for some reason, one of your people or a planning department person?
Yes, we can work remotely through this. And this software's already being used in other jurisdictions, so Idaho Falls is currently using the software, and our builders are ecstatic that we're looking at trying to purchase this. The State of Idaho Division Building Safety's currently using the same software.
Linda?
Just to confirm, you said that it would be paid for by fees?
Well, it would be, it would be out of the budget. It's a budget ask, but unlike finance, the Building Department generates revenue through building permit fees. So even though it shows that, you know, as an ask, basically the fees are, it goes into the general fund, so it's kind of a wash.
Is the, is the software dynamic, so it can be used on a laptop and on a phone?
Smartphone.
Okay.
Yeah, it's extremely user-friendly.
Okay.
A lot easier than the current stuff that we have.
Roger?
I noticed that when we create permits for buildings, the houses are valued at far less than what they're sold for. How do we get that, you know, I mean, some of them are half or less?
It's because we haven't changed our price per square footage rate.
Okay.
In 20 years, and it's something that we can do, but at the same time, we're trying not, I mean, we've already brought in about $280,000 more than what it costs to run the department.
I can remember when we brought in over a million more. So, so just for, just for history's sake.
Yeah. It's something that will probably have to be looked at in the future, but the fees, it's just with the, our, how busy that we've been over the last year, it just takes a lot of time to do that, to address fee study.
But it seems as though that's a reasonable thing to do. I mean, if, clearly, housing has changed significantly in 20 years, and if we're still charging a permit fee based on evaluations that are 20 years old, I don't think it's, I mean, we don't give the general public that kind of a tax break, we, kind of a, of a permit break. We don't, I mean, sanitation goes up every, you know, virtually every year, water, I mean, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, to me, that seems like kind of a high priority thing to do, because it is one of the places where we can legitimately and legally generate revenue.
So the training that I've received, and I've got my Building Department, my certified as building official, building departments aren't supposed to be a general fund generator, revenue generator.
And that.
It's supposed to generate revenue to cover the expenses to run the department. It's not, the revenues shouldn't be used in other departments. And when it goes into the general fund, then we kind of lose control of that.
Right.
But that's the reasoning behind the permitting, is to fund the Building Department, not fund police or fire or parks.
So then you have no tax ask for coming up?
Well, we're out of Fund 78, but it's kind of a wash, because we bring in revenue that goes into fund, into the general fund.
Right, but for next year, you're not going to be asking for any property tax-driven expenditures from the Building Department, because if you are, then clearly there's a gap between...
It will depend, once we get a new CFO, if we go to a hybrid system where we're fee-generated and where the Building Department's ran out of, off its own funds, and then the years that building are slow, when we, if we're in a recession or something, then the general fund needs to pick us up. But where we currently are now is that the building permit fees go into the general fund. I believe there's a tax ask, but at the same time, we're still bringing in revenue. So it's kind of a, kind of a wash.
Well, maybe.
Claudia?
Um, oh shit, I forgot my question.
Okay.
I'm going to come back to you as soon as you, if you can remember it.
I forgot.
Then moving on, if there's no other questions, the only other thing that we're asking for is a new build, a new vehicle in the Building Department, so.
Didn't we just get a new vehicle last year?
No, last year we got a used, we asked for a new vehicle.
Well, but I mean, you know.
We got a used Expedition.
Okay.
That has higher miles.
How many miles does it have on it, give or take?
I believe it has like 113.
So Tom, I thought we were going to aim in non-emergency vehicles. I thought part of the whole adding vehicles to the, to the roster was to start aging vehicles out as close to 200,000, and it sounds like we're aging this. Is there something else wrong with it?
We've always wanted... Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. We've always tried to push for 150. We've, we've never really tried to dive into the 200,000 in, for my, my take on it. 200,000's pushing it pretty hard on, on work vehicles. 200, there's, there's a big push for 200,000-mile vehicles, for commuter vehicles and stuff like that. But we've seen, through our resources with other fleet agencies, when you start going above about 150, your cost starts to outweigh the, the weight of the vehicle. And so what we were historically doing was vehicles at 100,000 miles, and then we bumped it up to 150.
Okay, but 113 isn't 150.
Well, it's something that we're asking for. Again, we're generating revenue through permits, and, you know, builders get frustrated when we show up in old vehicles, we have another car that the transmission's starting to slip, you know. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
No, no, it's not coming back. I know, I've, I've completely lost it.
Sorry.
I might have to ask you later.
That's, that's fine.
Or email you or something. Can't think of it.
Anyways, and that's my presentation, if there's no more questions about the Building Department.
So my typical, my typical question is, what is, at the end of the day, what is your tax ask for the Building Department going to be for the 2023 budget?
I don't have that total number in front of me right now.
Okay, could you get it?
Because it's gonna, it's gonna vary on if, for the software and all that.
I understand, but, but if you got, if you get what you presented, based on what you've presented, if you could get me what your, what that would then result in as a total tax ask, that'd be great.
Oh, I have a, I know what my...
All right, she got it back.
No, it's not, it's probably not the same question, but have you, this, have you been, is this money coming out of your Fund 78 for the vehicle?
So there is money set aside in Fund 78 for vehicles of last year. The council last year told Jim not to put money in for the Building Department, and he did it anyways. So there's currently $88,000 sitting in Fund 78 earmarked for building and City Hall vehicles.
Okay. And so that's where the vehicle would come from?
Neither out of that or the council can, I mean, it's up to you when you're building your budget, if you want to put money into it for it, but there's currently in Fund 78, there's earmarked. We did, we are in the process of purchasing a vehicle for City Hall, but it's like $25,000.
And why is this vehicle $50,000?
Because that was a smaller, this is a smaller, because we're looking at trucks.
Right, but it's not a, a big truck, right? Because it's for the inspector to drive around and do inspections?
Well, it was going to be a new vehicle for me. I was going to get a full-size, or a Tahoe, like the other department heads have, which are up around the $50,000 range, so that's why we're asking for the 49.
Okay, any other questions, Building? Linda?
Just real quick, on the pay and benefits, the variance is negative. I was just curious about that.
Let me go back to the slide. That's because we had some retirements.
Okay, you're paying lower?
Yeah, there are pay and, and healthcare went down.
Okay.
So that's why there was a deduction in that.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, our Steve Wall and our electrical inspector retired, and we were very fortunate that we were able to get one, because we didn't have very many applicants.
Not a lot, not a lot out there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Chris has a question.
Oh, Chris has a question, sorry.
And this is actually a request to Fleet, and I'm not trying to, the last thing I want to do is, you know, create inter-familial consternation, but I, could you, Tom, please get me the roster of vehicles attached to, because I'm assuming the City Hall vehicles are a separate account, so to speak, than the Fleet, I mean, than the, than the Building Department. Could you get me those rosters, please? And then I might have some follow-up questions, mechanical questions for you, if that's okay.
Yes, and that's that.
Okay. I just got to find it again.
Oh, that's right. Oh, yeah.
The abatement fund.
Yeah, sorry, I just had it, now I can find it.
So I get this part.
There it is. So luckily, this one's a little bit smaller. This is Fund 940, or 964, the Abatement Fund. So the Abatement Fund is set up for when we have dangerous homes, oh, sorry, I didn't launch it. That, when we have dangerous homes or buildings that need to be torn down because of danger to the public. There's currently a couple that may need to be addressed that we're trying to work with, with the owners in the future, but this, this fund is, I guess it's, it's funding from 2% of the building permits, fees gets transferred over into this, in this fund. So last year, the expenditures was 115,833. We have the same setup for this year for, so by the end of the year, we'll have a fund balance of the 221,350,07. So it just sits there, it's earmarked, so in case we have a building that can't get torn down, we have at least some funding without having to come to council to ask for more to tear down a dangerous building that's a danger to the public.
And are those generally abandoned, or what do you do if somebody owns that building?
We have one right now that we've been dealing with for the last couple of years. It was safe, it was on Beth, and the owner started tearing it down, and he passed away. So now we have a half-torn-down home, and if the state won't take care of that home, then we'll use the money from this fund with council approval to go in and make, tear that down, haul it off, and then put an assessment on the property so that when it does sell...
When the land sells?
Yeah, that's if, if the estate can't take care of it.
Sells it, right. Right, okay.
How are we doing with the contact with the estate?
On that one, I just talked with Matt and Legal yesterday. They reached out to, to them, they're in touch with their insurance company, so we're going to give them a couple of weeks, and hopefully they'll be able to get that torn down, where the city doesn't have to use the funds to tear it down.
I think that, is that, that's the one that Chief Shai updated us on?
Yeah.
I believe, where there were two, multiple deaths and...
It's been going since I started work here three years ago. But at that time, it was more of the weeds, because the home was secure.
Right.
People couldn't get into it. Now the home isn't secure, and kids could get in there and have the possibility of getting hurt. So it's kind of a high priority for us to get that resolved.
Thank you for your patience.
No, they're fine. And that's, that's all I have for the Abatement Fund, if there's no other questions.
So, so at the end of the year, we'll have the 221?
Yes.
Assuming we don't spend any out of it.
Well, yeah, right.
And the last one is the City Hall presentation for maintenance of City Hall. So I'm over the City Hall, we have a lead custodian supervisor and a lead and two other full-time custodians that do the cleaning and the maintenance of City Hall and, and majority of our buildings throughout the city. And this is our expenses. I'll just address the elephant in the room. The operating budget is a 217% increase. The reason for this is our former CFO moved the funds for building maintenance out and put it into Fund 78. Fund 78 isn't a reoccurring fund. So once that money's gone, it's gone. So we've already done a budget amendment this year through the council, and you guys moved the money back into the budget, and so that's why you're seeing such a large increase this year. But we need to have the funding to do the maintenance. As you're aware of, we had the bathrooms that were out over this year, or yesterday, due to flooding, and we got to jet the lines and maybe mill the lines, because they're full of sand and other issues. So that's why we need that money. This is an old building, and sometimes we get, it's very expensive to keep things maintained, plus, you know, address other issues, like hopefully replace the carpet in here, because it's horrid, so.
It's better than my school carpet ever was in the five years I was there.
Roger?
I'm trying to wrap my head around this, because you've got $439,247.
Yeah.
But if he did something, he could only have done it in '21.
Yeah, so the, the other part of that is the $200,000 for the finance remodel, which we're not going to get to this year. And instead of asking for a budget amendment, we're just asking for the, the exact same that what we would have had last year's budget. There's been some delays with trying to get contractors and designs and all that.
Say that again.
So we're, we're planning on doing a remodel in our current City Hall for the Finance Department to enclose it and enlarge it, and that money was approved by council last year.
Right.
So that's why you see such a, the part of that increase. So it would have been the same ask as last year, because there's, there's no way we're going to be able to start that project this year before October to get, you know, because we haven't gone out for bids yet and get it on people's schedules, so we're just asking for that same budget amount that was last year, again this year.
Chris?
Yeah, but if, if we taxed for it last year, right, because it was maybe going to happen this year, that was my impression, that, that that was a hope for this year. So that means that in our overall tax ask to the public, that money was in that ask. So why isn't that money still in existence?
The money's there, it's just that we'd have to do a budget amendment.
Oh, all right.
Instead of doing a budget amendment, we're just asking for the, the money again. So the, the increase isn't any different, it just shows it on the slides, because when Jim moved it, he changed all the numbers.
Right.
So it looks bigger.
So, yeah, the money has not been spent, this is just approval to spend it, so they don't have to come back as a budget amendment next fiscal year '23.
Yeah. So, and then our full-time employees haven't changed, and that's my presentation. If there's no other questions.
Other questions for...
So, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a question for you, and, and I know that when it came up last time, you know, there was a council comment that, you know, the new City Hall might not happen for, you know, 10 years, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm just wondering, you know, with the approval, so to speak, or the enthusiasm around the comprehensive plan and the, and the, you know, rejuvenation of downtown, you know, that includes the possibility of, of City Hall being down there? I'm just wondering if it's, I realize, you know, decisions can be made right now, because it's, you know, they're, it's Chinese checkers in terms of the rejuvenation of downtown and so forth. But I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be wise to have some kind of a conversation around, you know, at what point does it become wise to, or at what point could we have a plan, so that we're not continuing to pour hundreds of thousands of dollars into this building right up to the, you know, to the day before we decide that, not we, because I won't be here, but, you know, whomever decides. And I, I'm just wondering, I, I, I realize that's a really fluid kind of conversation to try to have, but I, I'm wondering, maybe, maybe planning could, I, I don't, so I don't know how to structure that kind of a conversation, it's out of my wheelhouse, but I think cities have to have those kinds of conversations pretty regularly, and I'm wondering how we go about that and whether somebody...
Right now, there's a perfect building that's a lease option to buy, that would be perfect for City Hall, in my opinion, and I've been working, talking with Jim in downtown. You know, it would take renovating, there's still partial tenants in it, but the city could move some building, some offices into it, if we were, if the council was able to. You know, and I've discussed this with the mayor, you know, since, from what I've heard from council, the majority of the council would like to be downtown. Like I said, in my opinion, this would be the perfect building for us. Not every building is moved in ready, but those type of buildings don't come available to purchase very often.
How old is that building?
I don't know the age, but...
Because I'm...
It's a, it's a four or five-story building.
Right, but my, I guess my, my question is, if we're going to, I mean, I, I like the idea of the downtown City Hall, too, however, I mean, I guess I would, I would have to consider if we're going to move from a 30-year-old building to a 40-year-old building, and it's going to cost money to renovate, I'm just wondering, at what point is it not easier, especially for staff, to invest the money in the, you know what I mean? So I mean, I would have to know all that.
The problem with downtown is, I mean, to build new, you'd have to tear something down or find property that wasn't already a commercial use, and then it kind of takes away from the downtown vibe. You know, any building that we're going to build, you're looking at several millions, tens of millions of dollars to build. I think this building to purchase was roughly around $6 million, but again, it's a lease option to buy, so we'd go in under a lease until everybody else gets out and then purchase it. And, you know, you know, it would, if we want our downtown to grow, that's where City Hall needs to be. If we want to rejuvenal, if we come there, then everybody will grow.
I agree with that.
Chris?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't mean to take us off-topic here, but I guess what I'm requesting formally is that, that perhaps with the appropriate people, which I assume would include whomever from planning and whomever, that, that we have this conversation in a timely manner, because, you know, we, we put quite a lot of money this past year into this building, and, and we, we apparently have installed now the last available HVAC component for, you know, and, and if another one goes out, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Expensive.
So I'm formally requesting that, you know, as part of, you know, prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year, that we have a formal conversation with the appropriate people and hear from departments, you know, because it may well be that some departments think downtown is great, some departments don't, their parking, whatever, whatever. So, sorry to take us off-topic, but if we could have that conversation, I think it would be well worth it.
If the council's ready to have a conversation like that, then by all means, I was ready to move City Hall five years ago, 10 years ago, down there.
Great, good.
So I've talked, I've, I've got an architect that's actually begged me to do some work on the West Coast, and this is West Coast enough for him.
So I don't know what the...
He's a world-famous guy that just wants to do something here, so.
We can't make decisions, and, you know, but, but what, what would be the process, then?
I'll just, I'll get it, I'll work with the staff, and we can get on a study session, that's pretty, pretty easy.
Okay.
Rick?
Well, you know, these conversations, as the mayor has indicated, have been going on for a long time about to move downtown. But the building that Richard's talking about won't accommodate abandoning this building, so we're still going to may, need to maintain this building and keep it up. You know, the plan that I've heard is to leave the Police Department here, and perhaps other staff to move into that building, because the facility down there won't do it. There is no, there is insufficient parking to accommodate everything. So I don't think we want to... So, I don't think we want to get on a plan that says we stop doing maintenance on this building.
Well, no.
I'm not talking about maintenance, I'm talking about capital investment in.
Wall, new walls.
And, so, that, that, that's a different, maintenance, of course, we have to maintain the building, it's, it's in everybody's best interest. You know, even if we do at some point vacate it, we're going to want to sell it, and so if it's not maintained, we're not going to get anything out of it, but, but I'm not, I'm talking about major capital investment in this building, so.
I'm talking about, talking about that HVAC system. If that, if another one goes out, then we'll simply have to figure out another way to put a different kind of HVAC system in the building. You know, we, we can't give up on the building.
No, I understand that, and that, I, I don't believe I ever said, let's just give up on this building. I said, could we have a conversation, um, because it appears to me that it would be, um, wise, because we are expending a lot of taxpayer money, which is justified, but that's all I said, was could we have a conversation?
Let me do this, we'll get it on a study session, we'll skip back to the budget right now, because that's what we're here for, we'll get it on a study session. I'll work with the, with the department heads to, that I need to, to get it moving forward, and, and we'll have a discussion, that's.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to agenda, item three is the Fire Department, Ryan, Ryan O'Hern, Fire Chief, will give a presentation.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Ryan O'Hern, Fire Chief for the Fire Department in Bennett County Ambulance District. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and to serve the employees and citizens of this community. So, let's see here. So, there we go. Our org chart hasn't changed over the last few years, we have, uh, we are fully staffed at the current time, and so this is the organizational model we've been running on.
How many do you have total, Chief?
Uh, we have 68, and that's reflected here.
Oh, there it is.
Um, in the fireside, and then we have 23 on the ambulance side, so our, our total personnel is 91, but 68 of those are.
23 on the ambulance side?
Correct. Uh, and there is some shared operation of personnel between the two funds, but those are where the, the personnel are assigned. Uh, I know you're going to be hearing from HR staff later about more details involved with our labor lines. Most of what I'm going to address today are kind of the operating lines, this 890,000. Uh, and I'll just kind of call out there, we feel like we've brought a very reasonable budget for you. I did want to call out a few increases in some of our lines, because they did cause kind of a larger increase. When we signed the contract with the local last year, we included new, two provisions that were previously not budgeted for. One is known as the PVT, which is psychomotor vigilance testing, and that is daily testing that our people undergo when they show up to work and throughout their shift, uh, to assess their levels of fatigue. Uh, that was one of the concerns with moving to the new schedule. Uh, the cost of that caused that line item to go up by $6,804, and so we did see a 17% increase in that. And then the second line would be the enhanced Employee Assistance Program that requires an annual visit.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just have a question for you regarding that PVT. Is that something that, because I, I don't remember, but is that something that's going to be done in perpetuity because of the, uh, uh, new schedule, or is that something that you're doing for a certain amount of time to make sure that the new schedule doesn't, you know?
Right.
Wear everybody out?
It is in the contract right now, and it is called out specifically with this company, and the, uh, package of software is called out. However, there is a provision in the contract that says that if the local and the city agree, we can move away from that. So, there are options.
Okay, I was just curious as to whether it was test, a test, or?
Chris?
Yeah, so what happens if, you know, during the shift, um, somebody comes up as over-fatigued on that testing, and I'm, I would imagine that different people have different tolerances and et cetera, et cetera. So, two things, what happens if, you know, I'm in the middle of my shift and I'm now unacceptable, um, based on that metric? Then, somebody fills in for me and they get paid overtime?
Potentially, uh, we have not had that occur yet, and we are still working with the, the local to implement the manual, and it contains a range of options to mitigate, prevent, and address fatigue.
And then my other question is, what happens if, for example, uh, you know, out of all the people being tested, one person or two people seem to become, um, much more fatigued, you know, and they're clearly outliers relative, I mean, it, it seems to me that this gets us, you know, it opens the door into a really weird area, where we're kind of saying, okay, so you get fatigued and are unex, un, un, no, I don't want to say unfit, unfit, and, you know, not in a state to, to serve after one day, and that happens, you know, on a regular basis. I mean, that could be a huge can of worms.
Sure. Uh, we're trying to address those in our manual. Some of the options would be, uh, evaluation by a physician to make sure that the employee doesn't have an underlying condition that is manifesting itself in, in that problem. Part of this move has been to be more open and discuss and realize that firefighters are people, and they do get tired during the course of a work shift. And actually, part of the change to this schedule was to try to minimize some of that long-term fatigue and, and burnout.
Right, no, I understand that, but I, you know, it's, I just know from being a human that people have different tolerances for doing whatever they're doing, and some people fatigue much more quickly than others, and it just seemed, it just feels like we're getting into a really weird area.
Understood.
Right.
So, Council, I can tell you, since we started this new, um, schedule, talking to firefighters and talking to firefighters' spouses and families and stuff, they are not as fatigued as they were before. This has actually been a benefit and, and helped greatly is, um, with, with that. And so, if there's an outlier like that, like the chief said, they'll get that addressed in a manual and, and figure that out, what, what to do and how to handle that situation. But, right now, all of the firefighters, really, the fatigue is not near what it was before, and, and their families think they're nicer people than they were before.
Dramatic.
Dramatically, it's, it's been, it's been really good.
Do you envision, because that's been our experience since we've gone to this new schedule, do we envision then, as you said, like reviewing and, and eliminating the PVT requirement?
I wouldn't be surprised if that were the case, so.
And, and when I said you said, I meant that that was a possibility, I didn't mean you said that we were going to do that.
Sure.
But, does it look like it's likely we would do that, based on what we're seeing?
Um, to me, um, the, the testing, I think, is actually very interesting, and we're starting to see some data come in now that we've been on, and I think it's really interesting to see how it trends. I think it's showing that, as the mayor indicated, this didn't kill the system and, uh, impact our employees adversely. Um, so, to me, it's really interesting, um, but is it absolutely necessary to continue doing it? Probably not, it, it might fall in that nice-to-have thing. I mean, I think it is, uh, I think we are really leading in this area, because we are trying to change our culture and the way we talk about fatigue and, and, and employee health by extension. And so, I really think that this move has been a good move, and it really shows how progressive we as a department are and our employees are. But, if you ask me whether I would be willing to go away from it, I, I realize that budgets are tight, and this is a, a fairly expensive program, um, that we would have to continue to fund, so.
And I was going to say, it, it kind of has a stigma in the same way that, you know, like after a trauma, getting counsel, I mean, to admit that you are fatigued is seen as a, a weakness or something, so you're talking about addressing the culture of that as well?
Yes, and, uh, you know, that kind of dovetails in with that EAP, where all of our individuals, similar to the other responders in the Police Department, are seeing a mental health provider once a year, uh, as a wellness checkup, to just ensure that we are addressing all of our employees', uh, health needs holistically, mental health, physical health, and, and fatigue.
Okay, Claudia?
Well, I was just going to say that it wouldn't really be up to us to eliminate this program, because it's part of the CBA, am I right?
We would have to, the CBA says that if we were going to eliminate this, we would have to enter into.
Right, both parties have to agree, so.
And so, you would have to ratify.
Right, but they have to be willing to, to get rid of it.
Correct.
I, look, I believe that human performance is a very important thing, especially when it comes to first responders. And so, I, I, you know, of all the things to talk about cutting, you know, I, this would not necessarily be one of the things that I would put on the chopping block first thing. So, anyway, that's just my comment.
Okay. I think it would be interesting to get through this year. We, uh, have funded it this first year, uh, we did that when we initiated it, when you ratified the contract, uh, uh, with some salary savings from last year. And, uh, and we can bring you a report and show you the numbers.
That'd be great.
And, and you can make a decision on whether you think it's valuable. Right now, we're just starting to really get, they just, in the last two weeks, have started to send us reports, and so we're trying to, uh, collate that and, and really dive into it, but it is really interesting, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'd be interested in seeing that.
Yeah. Uh, so, those two items there, you can see, uh, caused an increase of about $17,000 to our operating line. Uh, and then we had some other increases that I thought I would, uh, call out. Uh, we did increase, uh, by $500 to our propane line, that is our ARF, um, trainer out at the airport. We actually have a live-fire training facility here for aircraft rescue firefighting, which is pretty unique for the region. Uh, the closest other one is in Helena, Montana. Uh, that uses propane to fuel the fire, and so we do training twice a year on that, and so there, and, and we have increased our frequency of training in the last few years. Uh, propane prices have gone up, and so we had a, a modest increase to that line. We did move some, we, the 3224 equipment, the reason that that line shows such a large increase, we did move some money into that line, so, uh, we thought that it more accurately reflected where items were getting purchased, uh, previously, we, and we moved some, some money out of miscellating, miscellaneous, miscellaneous operating expenses. And so, we're just trying to more accurately equate, uh, reflect where we're buying equipment. We did include about $9,000 for the EVT tool, I know there was a question earlier on that, and that's the diagnostic tool that our mechanic would use to, uh, basically the code reader, as they're known, I think, in the industry, to kind of tell you whether you have a problem with exhaust, fuel, engine, et cetera.
Is that replacing a current EVT tool?
Uh, we have one that.
Or has he been doing it like, ooh, that sounds like, and now he's getting an EVT tool?
No, it is replacing one that frankly wasn't up to the task, it only, it, it became outdated, and it would only do lighter duty vehicles, such as the ambulances. This one is a heavier duty vehicle that would do our entire fleet, including the fire trucks.
Oh, okay.
And I know we'll, I know we'll hear from, um, Ms. Nichols about this, but what kind of money do you have in your, in your Fund 78 line?
I think that they are actually presenting that today, I have to be honest. We were asked to submit a report, and we went back for the last three years and submitted what we thought we had contributed in fund balance to that. Uh, but I, I don't think I could speak to any.
Not a problem.
Okay. Uh, we did see an increase this year, our personnel do receive annual physicals under NFPA 1582 from our department physician, and those physicals went up from $865 apiece to 915, so that reflects an increase, uh, in that line of about, uh, 10%. One of our goals, moving forward over the next two years, is to improve our ISO rating. I know Councilmember Ortega, uh, mentioned yesterday about insurance and rates, and how those may be, uh, figured on, um, whether you have a, an alarm system or something. What, the way that, uh, insurance companies determine your homeowner's insurance is through your ISO rating. We're currently an ISO 3 department, and we feel very confident that, uh, moving forward, we may be able to lower our score to an ISO 2, which should have, uh, benefit our, uh, homeowners by affecting their insurance rates. And so, we did include, uh, $5,500 for the pre-planned software in that 4016 line, because , uh, pre-planning, pre-incident planning is a, a big factor in ISO rating, and we currently do not have a program.
So, we got a question for.
I, I got a statement. I was one of them that, uh, really dug into that a few years ago, and I had a, a couple of insurance agents tell me that, and this is going to be outdated numbers, but it seems to me like it was $35 in premium increase on a $135,000 house annually. For every $135,000 of value, the rating difference made $35 difference on their premium.
Which is probably.
So, if we dropped, we would be saving homeowners some money. If we go up, we were borderline three, I think, at that time. If we went up, we might have been increasing their premium by $35.
Claudia, and then Chris.
So, Chief, you, you just said we included 40, I thought you said we included $4,500 for this?
Uh, $5,500.
$5,500, and then it went from that, it went up another $6,850?
Let me look into that line to see if there were some other changes.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it was $5,500 or if it's $6,850, because I think we were planning on only about $5,500 to $6,000 for the pre-planned software. I'll dig into that and get back to you.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out that line there. Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, is, is this, regardless of what the price is, is it a one-time purchase, or?
I believe it's an annual, annual subscription.
Okay, so, if it's, whatever it starts at, it's, it's going to incrementally increase, like everything else?
Potentially, but it, it is in the, the line where our subscriptions are.
Yeah.
Uh, and then printing, uh, was small, a $600 increase, and then, uh, $2,000 increase. We just tried to reflect what our experience was on repairs, water heaters, furnace, AC, and then tires. Obviously, uh, tires have been more difficult to find, uh, everybody, we keep hearing the phrase supply issues, uh, but tires have become more expensive and harder to find, so we don't have as many opportunities to shop around necessarily, and so we added some money into that line. Overall, I believe our, our, our increase was just under 3%, if you take out the psychomotor vigilance testing and the employee assistance. Not included in this presentation, I know there was discussion, or we have had discussions, um, about an aerial apparatus. We have a, uh, our tower truck that is called Tower 1 was purchased in 2000, and NFPA, uh, recommends retirement at, uh, 25 years, so we're coming up on that. The, I didn't include an estimate in this, but, um, a new truck, right now, we're going through the spec process to understand what that would look like, is $1.84 million. There are some financing options, the way we have traditionally purchased fire apparatuses, financing that payment over 10 years, that equates to $227, $227,000 per year over 10 years. Those payments wouldn't start until a year after ordering, uh, so we do not, uh, the financing company pays all the upfront costs on that. Uh, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions, the only, uh, thing that I know that was asked earlier was the delivery time on that, and right now, they're saying 27 months from time of order on that truck, so it would be over two years until we had it.
Okay, we got a question from Linda, and then Claudia.
Um, is this the item that was on the list? Is this the item that was on the list that we received of projects from the whole city that are not budgeted? This was the one?
I believe so.
Okay.
If I understand which list you're referring to, we, and this was our, kind of our number one ask is that-
Right.
And at that time, we thought that it would be about 1.7 million. They took a 7% price increase in May. The other thing, purchasing with this financing company would avoid any future interest rate increases or any price increases if we were to order earlier.
Okay, Claudia?
So Linda, are you talking about the ARPA list?
No. There was the other.
The other list?
One time.
Okay, the one time, okay.
So-
Chris?
If I'm understanding, so, so if, if this item were approved, would we, do we, do we begin paying a year after we say yes, we want it? Or do we begin paying a year after delivery? Because then we're, we're either two and a bit or three and a bit years out, depending on which.
So there are two options. Hypothetically, if we were to order, I'm just gonna pick a day of July of this year. You can choose to make an interest-only payment one year after ordering, nothing upfront. So July of 2023, we would need to build in an interest-only payment, which right now is $73,000. And then when we take delivery of the vehicle, we would start paying the $227,052. The other option is to not pay that interest the first year and just pay a regular payment, which obviously saves you that interest payment over the course of the, the financing. And so at one year after order, we would just pay the $227,53.
After ordering, okay, thanks.
Claudia?
So, I'm not real good at math, but I was just doing some basic subtraction. If we finance, we'll be paying an extra $429,317 for this truck. So that's just something to consider.
Yeah, $429,842.
Okay, so-
You are good at math.
That's just, well, sort of. That's just something to keep in mind when we're debating.
The current interest rate as of last week, when we were speaking with the financing company, is 4.01%.
Okay.
Okay.
So what I heard you say, Ryan-
Roger, no, go ahead.
What I heard you say, though, is it's at least 27 months out.
Correct.
So we would be billed next year if we ordered July 1st.
Correct.
We would be billed again in 2024, and then we would get it about the time that we started the 2025 budget year.
Correct.
Is there-
And if, do we, if we pay, when do we pay if we, if we buy it outright?
When you order.
You, so we would have to pony up 2 million bucks, basically, and then it's gonna take them 27, they're gonna have our 2 million bucks for two years.
Correct. The, yeah, the financing company does the prepay, but if you just do an outright purchase, you have to pay 100% upfront.
Wow, but we're not getting much interest.
Chris?
Anyway, so.
Her question, less than 1%, drove my question.
Actually, I should-
Sorry.
I apologize. There are some prepayment discounts. I think they do have options, and I will explore those. But there are options to pay a portion upfront, because I know that when I was looking at the contract they sent, there was benchmarks that had to be hit for payments prior to delivery.
Okay.
And so the 100% upfront is just to get the prepayment discounts, which are fairly substantial, and I will get you that information.
Okay, just because I'm, I'm just thinking, if we're, if the interest rate is 4% and we're making one or less with the bank, then there's, it, to me, that's just throwing away money, because that half a million dollars could be put to something else. So if you could look into that when, when it comes time to make that decision, that would be good information to have. Thank you.
So you'll wanna, you'll wanna have that information by the end of this month. Any other question, oh, Chris?
Is there an early payoff penalty?
I don't believe so.
I'm sorry?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
But I will confirm.
So in theory, we could do our own hybrid, so to speak?
Correct, and I believe we may have done that with the last aerial that we purchased.
Okay, any other fire questions? Because it looks like we're headed to ambulance. Okay, thanks, Chief.
Okay, this is mostly for information, just to give you an idea of what our budget authority we would be asking for. At this point, these numbers have not been presented to the county commissioners. We have our presentation with them next week. As mentioned earlier, we have 23 full-time employees in the ambulance budget that did increase in the last few years with the addition of the billing and coding clerk. And then nine of our employees are shared between the two budgets, EMS paying a portion of the wages and fire, because, for example, our training officer and our public relations, they do activities in both budgets. So, these are some of the increases that we will be presenting to the commission, very similar to some of the things that we just showed you on our operating budget.
Any questions for ambulance?
I guess, like, my question is, this, is this what you present, or will you present after you have the CBA agreement numbers?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
The collective bargaining agreement. Does this include that in here for ambulance? Or do you have to add that to go to the county?
No, I, I, those labor lines estimates, I believe, do increase the contractual, address the contractual increase, and I know that, I think that more detailed information is coming in a presentation today.
Okay, so you've, you've, you've seen what the increase will be and charted it?
We have a pretty good understanding of that.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
What time, you've gotta leave in 15 minutes.
Yes. I don't see. So Ryan, just off the record, is, is that in your department labor issues too, or are you just doing it for the ambulance? The, because you're down 43, 41,300 in labor.
On the city side?
On the, just on the labor for the fire department?
Yeah, I think that's due to some retirements and also a shift in some cost allocation to the EMS budget for medical insurance.
Okay, thank you. We will move to Agenda Item 5 then. Roger has about 15 minutes before he has to leave, and so we'll see if we can get through this. Capital Contingency Fund 78, Ann Nichols, Administrative Services Manager, will give a presentation.
Happy Baker Wednesday, Mayor and Council. So to start with Fund 78, just as a reminder, many years ago, this was created using some property tax funds so that we have some contingency for giant breakdowns. The tower truck goes out this year, and we haven't ordered yet, those types of things. And then it's also been used because in the general fund, those departments that are in there are technically not allowed to have savings because it's a fund. And so those of us who want to do some purchases and not do giant impacts to the general fund have been allowed to use this account for savings. So just to let you know, we do have two requests this year to use Fund 78 money so far. The building department is requesting to use $25,000 for their vehicle purchase, and currently, they have $84,000 available for use. The engineering department has applied for a grant for the Center Street sidewalk project. They are expecting $175,000 in revenue, and they are requesting to use $45,000 for reserves for the 20% match. That goes not from their savings account, but from the bottom line available, which would be the 1.3 million.
I, I remembered, you know, police mentioning their locker room. You know, we just talked about the, the aerial tower. Are those not formal asks? Why are they not included on this list? I guess is the best way for me to put it.
They are not formal asks at this point. They were listed on the, we'd like to have but are not budgeted spreadsheet that were sent to all of you.
Thank you.
And that list, just to clarify, was prioritized in, by all the departments together, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and ranked, I mean?
And that aerial apparatus, I believe, was number 12. So-
Claudia?
I'm, I'm confused because when Richard was here, he, he had $49,000 for the vehicle for building, and this only says $25,000 for the vehicle for building. So what number is the right number?
We can clarify that. The number that he gave me was $25,000 to include in this ask, so he may have readjusted some of his particular budget numbers, but we can get that for you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Just make a little note here. And then, this is the teeny tiny little sample I put on the slide that is available online in a much bigger format. Thank you, but we provided those for you so you could actually read those. That just shows the amount that each individual department from the general fund has. You do need to note in the fire department, there are three wildland engines. Those have been ordered, they are supposed to be delivered. These are the ones that we had one donation for purchase, one grant for purchase, and one purchase will come out of this. So not all of that 388 will be used, but, so they'll have some additional savings that hopefully can go to the tower truck.
And Chief, those we should be taking possession of last month, but we're here in August?
Hopefully next one. I'm gonna reach out to BME to try to get an understanding so that we can prepare to request-
Just after the fire season's over.
That's what I was afraid of. That's right. Okay?
Yes.
Oh, Chris?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm reading this sheet correctly. So looking at police, there are the three proposed expenditures, right? And then the total is the total that is in the fund prior to extracting?
No, that is the total of what they have in that fund. So they've set aside $125,000 plus the $250, plus the $150 equals the $525. Those are their, that's their total amount.
All those totals, all of the totals.
Right, and, and so, so what police is proposing would, would completely zero out their Fund 78?
If it comes forward as a formal ask, correct.
Okay, all right.
It's also possible, just as someone who manages a fund, it's also possible that I may have another emergency for whatever reason, that I could come and say, yes, I know I was planning to do a vehicle replacement, but such and such blew up, so council, I need to take my savings to use this instead. These are not hard and fast, this can only be used for this. This is what, at the current time, the departments are currently trying to plan and save for, so that we don't have such a huge ask.
So if I may ask you, this, and this isn't because of you, this is to make sure that I'm grasping this. So if in this budgeting round, this $525 were okay, then police would go into next year with nothing in 78?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
With the one exception, if they could not get this done, then some of this money would carry into 2023.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
Roger?
So there is a differential of $1,319,000-
That's correct.
-between what is reserved and what is unreserved, so to speak. So if the H fact unit went out here, I don't remember what the price tag was, but it seemed like that might be where that'd have to go.
Yes.
So, so if you remember right, Council, years ago, this is why this set, fund was set up in case of an emergency like that. And over time, they started putting money, the, the departments were set aside, were saving for capital projects into Fund 78. And so historically, we've put $1 million into this fund for emergencies and stuff like that.
So when you, having said that, then, are you then saying that in the 2023 budget, the total contingency emergency funds would actually be $2,319?
So my proposal would be, yes, we add $1 million into this for an emergency situation if that's the case. Now, last year, if you remember right, Chris, you said you wanted a $1 million cut, and our CFO cut $1 million and did not put that into the 78.
Right.
So that has not been factored into the proposal for tax use. It would have to be something that would be, have to be changed.
That would be, that would be a discussion that we have when we're, when we're filing, well, doing everything we can at the end of this month. So. Any other questions? Thank you, Ann. Roger, we got 15 minutes. We will move then. Do you wanna jump into that salary, or do you wanna? You got 10 minutes.
Just go into it.
Okay, we'll jump into it. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 6. Salary and Pay Schedule Discussion. Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director, will give a presentation on the following topics. Union CBA costs, fiscal year 2023 compensation, police management pay, pay scale, fire management pay scale, general employee pay scale, variable pay scale, and seasonal, seasonal pay scale.
I'm gonna guarantee you're gonna wanna break between the union and the compensation, just for the record. So Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director. So you have a paper copy of this presentation in front of you, because true to my nature, you were, it was updated up until I left City Hall last night, so-
What time is that?
I left, I left on time last night, I left at 5:00. It was a great improvement.
So it wasn't this morning that you left?
I did check the numbers again this morning. So as you're aware, we have two collective bargaining agreements here at the city. I'm gonna address the costs that we know we have for fiscal year 23. So first up is the fire union. We are in year two of a three-year contract. The column with the little, it's supposed to be yellow, but the brownish mustard-colored box on the screen shows their fiscal year 23 wages. Those wages have been put into salary projections. So my numbers at the end of this are accurate because they are what is running through our financial system. The police, this year, they have a seven-step scale. We are adding one step, and we are adding 3%. So both charts are getting 3%. We're in year two of a four-year collective bargaining agreement. So your increases, so I pulled the fiscal year 22 budget worksheets, which I can bring in my green bar if you wanna look at it, and I compared it to what we are showing now. And our increase to, each fund is listed, so ambulance, and then fire, and then police. The general fund impact is 1.3 million increase. To ambulance, it's about $200,000. This only includes union members, this does not include management. This also includes police civilians with a one-step movement.
Okay, say that again.
So the numbers here include all of the fire union, except for the four managers. That includes their medical benefit increase, all of that is built into these costs. Of all the numbers I give you today, these are the most accurate.
Okay, not management, includes healthcare.
So for the police union numbers, this includes their wages and all medical benefits increased by the percentages we, we've discussed. So the only ones not included out of the police department are the 11 members of management. So your total CBA cost for 23-year, $20,121,149, which again is an increase of 1.3.
So I guess I, I come to you because Brian, Ryan said that the ambulance figures he was taking would be $88,968. You're showing here 200.
Yeah, Ryan's working off the last numbers the departments were provided. When we, so normally, there's like five of us working on this. This year, there's two of us. So when we do calculations, we have to build them in to what we call the base file, and then that has to be uploaded into the budget. We had the base file built, I have to upload it into the budget, and then we have to pull it down in a report and break it down to analyze the costs. Ryan has a version that we were working on. We found some errors in the actual HR system that were impacting longevity calculations for who should be starting this year, so we had to correct those. There's a lot of pieces that go into the number you see. And it took many, many hours of work to get to this point. These are accurate as I can get at the moment. What Ryan has, I don't know at what point we gave him those numbers. These are the ones that I can tell you where we did an audit on. And they are very close.
So Ryan will talk to you before he goes to the county.
Well, that's why I warn counsel that when you're asking for what your tax ask is and what your lines are, those numbers are not accurate. You're paying, pin the tail on the donkey.
Right.
And this year, it really is a donkey. That's it for the unions.
That's it?
See, this is a whole four slides. The next one's a few more.
Bartender.
So half the department heads in this room have heard this presentation about four times at this point. So they were my test audience. In front of you, you have a chart of accounts, which I've handed out.
Hold on just a minute, Heather.
It sounds like we're going to be in here a while. Do you mind if we take a break before we start this one? Or do you want to start and do halfway through? That's fine with me too.
Let's go halfway through. I want Roger to get as much as he can get before he's got to leave.
Are you going to this?
Yep. So there's a table, there's a chart in front of you that has a blue row heading at the top. That's the most current chart of accounts that I had. So if I list any account numbers that you're not familiar with, I just wanted you to have those handy. So you have a hard copy. If you'd like that sent out to you digitally, I'm happy to do that as well. All right. So for fiscal year 22, we currently operate six pay scales here at the city. The first we've already discussed is sworn police, which is controlled by the CBA. We also have police management, which is built off of the sworn chart. We have fire and then fire management, which is built off of their chart. We then have the hybrid scale you're used to seeing for general employees and police civilians. And then we have a combined seasonal and variable hour chart. Of the six charts we have, I'm asking for five action items, noticing that two of those are already set. So I'm obviously doing something different this year. For police management, we are asking for an increase to the current scale. For fire management, we are bringing a new scale forward for your consideration. Action item three, we are looking to change the hybrid and have a new general employee chart for fiscal year 23. Seasonal, we are looking for an increase to the table. And then variable and seasonal are currently on the same chart. We would like to talk about the option of splitting off the year-round seasonals that have a full-time equivalent position at the city. You're going to have a lot of questions. So if you let me get through the slides in each action item, it'll probably answer some questions. And then we can kind of take them as a chunk.
Wait.
Claudia.
No, no, no. I just want to take notes real quick before you move on.
I talk fast, so just do the stop and I'll slow it down.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So our first action item is the police management scale. This does affect 11 FTE in the department. That's four ranks. Six lieutenants, three captains, one major, one chief. This is their current scale that we're on this year. It is seven steps and it does have the four ranks. For fiscal year 23, we are looking to add one step. And we are looking to add 3% to the chart. This mirrors what we are doing with the sworn officer scale. The cost on this is about $83,000 of an increase. And that, so the recommendation does take us to 1.6 million.
So that's a modification of what we received. Okay.
Yes, Josh?
So.
How many positions are on the new, or will be on the new step in fiscal year 23?
I honestly don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to look it up.
Okay.
Claudia, you have a question.
No, no. So I just want to confirm that when I go back.
Management is not in there.
Right. So when I go back to this, I'm gonna?
For the total cost of police, you would have to add management in.
Okay. And that total would be the 1.6?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I will send out the updated presentation afterwards.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
So before I gave you all oranges, now I have all citrus in the basket. They're close, but they're not exactly the same. So I'll let you know where you're going to see discrepancies in my numbers. Okay. So that would be your first action item at the end of this presentation. I need guidance on, not as final decision, but to us to build the budget, what I can actually roll into the budget for costs. Currently, the salary projection file does include that 3% for management and the step, just because they're on the same scale. But I can adjust whatever we need.
Go back one, get one, one, real quick.
Okay, we got Claudia and then I've got Rick.
No, no, go ahead. I just wanted her to go back to.
Okay, Rick.
Would it be appropriate to take these one at a time as we go?
Absolutely.
I would move, we, we ask Heather to proceed using these numbers to begin to build final budget numbers for us to ask, act on.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. Connie, would you call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, so you got Build It and we'll go from there. We'll, it's liquid, but Build It.
It is. All right. So item two is the fire management scale. There are three ranks on this scale and it does affect four people. One division chief of training, two assistant chiefs, and one fire chief.
They're not adding 14 million.
No, no, no. So I realize when you're looking at the screen, you can't read the columns in black. What that is, is it's the longevity scale. It starts at year five and it ends at year 25. I just want it so you have it for reference. On the left is their current pay scale. I've added the hourly column. Currently, fire is paid on a bi-weekly concept. I added the hourly so you can compare it to the chart I'm going to show you. So HR is recommending the new scale. And the reason is we would like to eliminate longevity as an ad pay. We would like to roll that into the base wage over the course of the steps. We would be moving to additional step and grade table so that it's a lot easier to articulate what a position makes. All four positions on the scale are exempt. So these are the only exempt positions in the fire department. Additionally, we've added 1.92% to these four positions at their base wage to have pay equity between police management and fire management. Currently, captain, major, chief, and the records manager receive 1.92% additional pay beyond their base wage for their on-call status. We would like to also share that over with the fire department.
Josh?
Moving to this traditional step format and it removing longevity, do, are steps an hour, a yearly guarantee?
We, the city has never not funded steps. So I would say, yes, they are guaranteed.
Okay.
Real quick, for, for me, this is only for, this removing the longevity is only the fire management, not the union.
Only affecting the management scale.
Okay.
Okay. So this is the chart that I would like to proceed with. I threw some numbers in there on the left so that I could keep track of them in the system. So we would go to a 10-step scale, which is where hypothetically, we will end with the police scale at the end of this collective bargaining agreement. We're adding one step a year. So it will be a 10-step scale. We've added 3% to mirror the image that fire, sworn fire union is getting. And then we've added the 1.92%. So I've also taken longevity and added it to steps. 250 to step one, 50 cents at step three, and 75 cents at step five. That takes it 25, yeah?
The 1.92, is it added each year or one time?
Added one time and ripples up the chart.
Okay.
And then 75 cents at year five, which does make the overall longevity max 25 cents higher. Again, we're talking about very tenured employees, high levels of management. They're running divisions. They're in charge of training. These are very big. So that little 25 cents an hour really isn't a big deal. But it is something we should do to see that we are continuing to push the importance of tenure with our employees while moving away from the more historical approach of using longevity to compensate. Any questions on this scale before I give you some costs? So the cost sheet is updated from what you have on your tablets. Again, this is because we were able to break down the projection file last night. So it's broken down by total and then your fire cost and your ambulance cost. The recommended increase, the HR, it's 57,000 increase for a total of 634,000 overall. 424,000 of that is a general fund impact.
Okay, four?
Four, 424, 869. And I'll send these slides out afterwards.
Yeah, but I'll, I need to make notes because when I get the slides, I'll, I'll have to ask you the same thing.
So questions for?
And that is the end of the fire management section.
Okay. So, yeah, I do have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so the, on the left of the, well, as I'm looking at, on the left of the slide.
Yeah, right here.
Right. That replaces the top of the slide.
Correct.
Okay. And that's the difference?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd move that we ask Heather to use these numbers to begin to prepare our budget as we did in action, the first action item.
Second.
So I have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. And with that, before we move to action item three, I promised we would get Roger out of here at 10:15. So counsel, we're going to take a break right now. And then we will be right back. Oh, wait, I, okay, I got the thumbs up. Thanks, Ken. Thank you for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and continue on with action item number three.
So action item number three is what we currently call the hybrid scale. HR is bringing a new scale for your consideration. In the bottom left of the screen in front of you, I didn't change that slide this morning. This affects 52 police civilians and 328 general employees. Now, I want to make a note here. I'm talking about employees, not FTE. So there will be more people on this list than there are authorized FTE because if I split a position, it counts as one FTE. But it's going to count as two employees in this chart. Because two halftime positions make one FTE, but they're still the two people. So these numbers are not going to line up. So if you're trying to balance those, it's never going to work for you.
Okay.
So we've been on the hybrid for five years. That is built off of the 2014-15 external BDPA study that we funded. Over the five years, I've received feedback from counsel and I've received feedback from employees. And I am bringing those changes for your consideration today. The biggest thing we're changing is we are eliminating the pay-for-performance steps, which is seven through 37. The intent of those steps that are half percent was never to give half percent raises. The intent was always to give 2% to 3% that then would be divvied out based on merit. We have never funded the chart with the merit piece beyond half a percent. So if an employee, once they hit step seven, the only raise they're going to see unless we adjust the table is half a percent. We all know that is not keeping up with the cost of living. And we also know that not every year we adjust the table. So the table itself, we've increased by 3%. It's going from 37 steps down to 12. We have hit, identified a few pressure points in the scale and we have also modified the scale to address those. One of those pressure points is year six or step six.
The old scale six?
The new scale six, which is the little piece of paper in front of you. So our numbers show that our retention loss point, if we get someone to vesting, is at the start of year six. I can tell you exactly why that occurs. They become vested. They now start looking for outside employment. They don't do it right away because, you know, the holidays. People start looking and we start losing people between year six and seven at a ratio that is a problem for us. So I have increased step six on the new scale to 6.75%. It is incredibly aggressive and it is an effort to keep long-term employees. At year six, an employee is not just functioning in the position and making small improvements. They are revitalizing it. They are changing processes. They are driving improvement from the employee level, not necessarily from a managerial level. At the end of the scale, we've also added two merit or incentive steps. I don't know what word I want to use there. So you get both words on everything I hand out to you until I figure it out. Both of those merit steps are 6%. Not everybody will achieve those. Once you've hit step 12, you would be eligible to achieve one of the steps. And each of those steps is 6%. So if you achieve both merit steps, your pay table goes up from a 40% width to a 52. Now, merit pay is always a problem when we address, how do we make sure it's equitable? And we have, we believe, found a way to solve that problem. Every position in the city that is on the general employee scale will be amended to include criteria as to how to achieve merit steps in that position. It'll be defined criteria. HR and legal and the departments will work on that over the course of fiscal year 23. No one is eligible for a merit step this coming fiscal year. Everyone would, if they're at max, they stay at a 12. So when an employee reads their job description, they know what they have to do to achieve one of those merit steps. So we're trying to make it, you know, my manager doesn't like me. We're trying to eliminate that argument. We're going to have forms or a memo or supporting documentation that's submitted, tracked by HR, and then built into salary projections. So when we budget each year, we know who has achieved that step that is eligible that year. So we know to pull that in the budget numbers.
Josh?
How are you going to pull, and what, so let's say I'm step 28 right now. What step would I fall into? How are you calculating and pulling employees into the new scale?
So I wrote it down so I could give a concise answer. So the last time we changed pay scales, which was with the BDPA study, the problem, part of the problem is we went from three decimal places to two, which means some employees got fractional raises. It was, you know, a quarter of a penny a pay period. So that made me feel really crappy. And I can't imagine how it felt as the employee. So what we did is I gave them a step on the old scale, so what they would have been in, in the fall. And then I placed them on the new chart. So everyone will receive at least a minimum of a half percent raise. When I break down the numbers, again, these are calculated in Excel, not the salary system. Historically, I'm within usually $1,000 of the total. So I'm pretty precise in my estimates. The smallest raise someone will receive moving to this scale with 3% added is 3.03.
Percent?
Percent. That does include a step on the old scale for their placement. So if I'm approved to do this and it ends up in the budget at the end of the fiscal year, we will sit down and we write a memo to every employee explaining how the transition happened. One is delivered to them and one is put in their personnel file. One deviation this year that I, I've always done in the past that I haven't done this year at all is I have not gone out and taken this table to employees. Employees have not seen it. We have not had discussions. The reason is it's really hard to take a table The reason is it's really hard to take a table that's this big a change that I don't know if council will fund. All that does is hurt morale, and I'm not kidding. This is the biggest ask I've ever brought as HR director. Every year I've worked within our budgets, I'm asking you to push this year.
So Claudia has a question, I just heard.
Do you have, did you have a question first?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding. So, the, I think you said that the, when people become eligible for merit pay, that that merit pay, what was that, what would that percentage increase be?
I meant 6% for each merit step. And once you've achieved the step, you stay at it. You do not go back down.
Okay. So, then in theory, I know this wouldn't happen realistically, but let's say this was a raging success. I mean, the whole, your whole proposal is a raging success. Theoretically, 328 people, or 300, yes, 300, no.
No, 380.
Well, 380, whatever that number was.
All the general employees and police civilians.
Yes, yes, yes. Would all, in theory, be eligible at some point for a 12%? Well, it'd be more than that, because it'd be 6% of whatever, and then 6% of that, so.
Each employee's range would go from a 40% scale to a 52% scale.
Right.
That is correct.
Okay. And you did say that, I just.
Nope, happy to clarify.
Was thinking, thinking about it from a different perspective. Thank you.
Okay, Claudia.
I'm going to need you to explain, yeah, I'm really sorry, but I'm going to need you to explain to me again Josh's question. If I'm at a step 28 now, where am I going to be?
So, I can't address it specifically to an individual. I can address it how it theoretically was applied. So, if I'm at a step one, and I'm moving to a step two in the fall, I took your step-two placement.
On the old chart?
On the old chart.
Okay.
And then I placed you on the new scale, which has the same starting range, but has now been increased 3%.
Okay, all right, thank you. I don't know why I didn't get it the first time.
Well, I talk about this all the time, so when I start to glaze over, I know I need to do a little bit better job on my description.
Okay.
Okay, so now I have a handout, and the reason is the handout is because it's very hard to put up on the screen and talk through without you being able to hold it.
We have a question first, though, so Linda.
No, I don't have a question.
Okay, never mind.
If you want to continue.
So, the big giant one is the current scale. You notice you can still barely read it on the biggest paper. I guess Jeff could have put it on the plotter for me, and I could have brought in a scroll.
Why didn't you do that, Jeff?
It would have been a little more dramatic, I should have thought about that ahead of time.
She rolls a scroll across.
Yeah, I know, right.
So, the current, the new scale still has the same 19 grades. Those have not changed, and people's placement in those have not changed. So we are still staying true to the last study we did with an external vendor helping us place people. I have, however, adjusted those steps. Again, we're consolidating. Steps one, so between one and five, you're going to get 3.5%. At step six, it's 6.75 that year.
Are you, you're talking about the new chart?
Yep.
Okay, 3.5?
Little chart.
3.5 to 6.75?
And then eight, eight through 12 are 2.25. I didn't want to give you easy numbers to calculate, I really want you to have to bust out the calculator.
2.25 from step seven to 12?
Yes.
And what was the second one you said?
Step six, which is, I identified as a pressure point on the scale, is 6.75.
Okay.
And 2.25 was seven to what?
To 12.
To 12, okay.
Now, I know this is addressing a lot of the issues council has had. Now you want to know what it's going to cost you. Well, I have those two.
This is, this is the trans, this is the transition.
Clarify your question.
Explain again what, what, what the, so, so is the difference per step in steps one through five, 3.5?
When you go from one to two, your raise that year will be the 3.5%.
In perpetuity? Or just in the transition?
Two, two-step five.
So, between one and two, when you hit two and you stay at two till you go to three, it was a 3.5% increase over what?
Each.
Up until six.
Right.
So, yes, each, so step one, step two.
So basically annually, you can expect a 3.5% raise.
For the first four years.
Yeah, okay.
Is everyone comfortable? Because I know this is a lot of data coming at you.
Okay.
Okay. So, when I talk about costs, I usually bring you just a big number, and then finance gets to come in and break that down by fund. Well, I'm playing finance today by breaking this down by fund, which is why you have the chart of accounts in front of you. So, when you break it down, your general fund impact is usually your first ask for me. Overall, the increased cost of this chart over where I anticipated we would be is 1.4 million.
Do we have that?
It's on this presentation.
Oh, okay, but there's no paper.
I didn't do a printout.
Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
The general fund impact of that 1.4 is $480,973. Of course, that is not the only tax, tax fund we have on the chart, but that is the one we usually talk about first.
Can you say that number again?
Yep, it's, it's the third one down right here, the 48973.
I see, sorry.
I should have had this, like, you know, it could pop up, the color of the one I'm talking about. Internal service funds, those departments are partially funded by enterprise and tax. I'm not sure what the actual split on those is. So I would need to put these into the system for me to get a more accurate representation of what the tax impact there would be. The recreation fund is an increase of 52,000. If I'm a mouse. Science and environment is an increase of 7,700. Our special revenue funds is an increase of 133,000. The street fund is an increase of 113,000. And then transit is just over 61,000. Enterprise overall is 412. That does include police civilians, which are part of the CBA costs. If you look at that general fund number of 480,000, the police civilian portion of that is 161.
Of the 480?
Yes. So, what I need is, hopefully, council guidance to build this into salary projections so it accurately flows into the financial system, so we have better numbers.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, so the, the police civilians are part of the CBA?
Yes.
And then they're also going to be on this?
The police civilian number I gave you earlier was a one-step movement with no addition to that, to the hybrid table. Police civilians listed in the CBA say they will receive the same as general employees. So that's CBA driven.
That's what it says in the CBA, okay, all right.
So when I talk about the cost, that is a CBA cost, even though it is within the scales cost also. This is where I'm kind of at the fruit basket and not at oranges.
Okay.
So, I need council guidance to put it into the system so that we can have better numbers flowing for Ann and I to kind of coordinate revenues and tax.
So I've got Linda and then Rick.
You going to do it?
Go ahead.
I was going to do it.
Do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
You have a question?
I have a question.
Okay, Chris has a question. Before, if you don't have a question, Chris.
So, could you, and, and I realize this is another one of those moving targets that, that is impossible, but.
She's going to ask you anyway.
But I think it's a good idea, well, I think it's a good idea to have, you know, some kind of a handle on it. So, could you, at some point, take this new scale and play it out over, project it out over, say, four years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would appreciate that sometime before we get to final.
Well, you said, can I do it? You didn't say you wanted it.
Well, I would, I would like, I would like that. I would like that, because I think, again, you know, looking, I mean, this isn't, this isn't a one, I mean, a one-and-done impact. I mean, this is an in perpetuity, or until the next change, kind of an impact. And so I think it's important to look at what it begins to look like projected over the near future.
The projection will be as accurate as the numbers I have at hand. I can't account for the entire.
You have no idea what, and that's why I say, I know this is another one of those amorphous questions.
But since we can, since we can project the CBA, I mean, since we know what the CBAs are, it would be helpful to have.
Well, I can get you one year of estimated costs for all three, and then fire is open again.
Okay.
Yeah, Josh has a comment.
I think after COVID, that employment became the number-one issue and the greatest difficulty for any organization, municipality, or business, without a doubt. I think a lot of our departments are running on bare-bones staff, if that, including you and the work that you put in. This is exceptional work. Thank you for the work that you put into it.
This means a lot for employees. This is a retention problem. I'm not even worried about recruiting at this point.
Because you can't recruit.
I can't recruit.
Okay, Linda?
And, and I think, I mean, you just said it. And, and both retention and recruitment, I think, are at kind of crisis levels. This is something that is absolutely necessary. We've been sort of, for lack of a better way to put it, kicking this can down the road. I mean, we haven't been addressing pay, and we are just getting further and further and further behind. And now that has taken both recruitment and retention to absolutely crisis levels. So, with that, I move that we adopt this scale. And thank you for.
So, you want to adopt this scale, or you want to put it in there?
I want to build the budget using this scale, yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Connie, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
So, action item four, we are going to talk about the seasonal chart that some other department heads have brought up. Last year, we did request an increase. Unfortunately, that didn't make it into the budget. So the fiscal, I got to find my mouse. The fiscal year '22 chart is the same as '21, and it's unfortunate. We are asking for an overall 12% increase to this table. This is an effort to help with our summer staffing. However, I have to be clear, 12% to this table does not solve the problem. Less than 3% unemployment makes it, I think we're less than two at this point. Very low unemployment makes it very hard to hire. Additionally, some of our hiring practices are a little outdated in departments, and we're trying to get those evolved so that we can match what the workforce is looking for. If you are a skilled worker and you want a full-time job right now, you have one. So it is very hard to pull people into seasonal skilled positions, because that population is just not there.
Josh has a question.
First question is, how much flexibility does this chart have without breaking your other chart? Does that make sense? Because I know internal equity isn't a problem, and you can't just, can you pretend they're in vacuums? I doubt it.
You can.
You can.
Don't.
Okay.
So, if you're looking at the new chart, which is the little piece, we don't have anyone in grade one. So that is a vacant grade. I don't eliminate it, because historically we've had it. So I don't want to shift everyone's numbers again and cause heartache, because everyone would go down. So if, really, our starting wage at the city is 1402. I wish with every part of my bean, I could get that to $15 an hour this year, but I can't get us there. So if you look at that, 1402 is the starting wage, which is a little below the starting wage of a P6, which is more of a skilled equipment operator that we would bring in for the parks. P1s, P2s, you're talking about lifeguards, kind of limited positions, no super, heavily supervised sort of things. We do have a kinds and levels charts for this. Departments do not get to pick where their employees are placed on it. We control what the pay grades are.
So Josh has a follow-up, and then I have Claudia.
I know you're going to get to costs, and I'm not skipping two final costs. Is, do you believe that this 12% is the, you know, you said over on, on this chart, you know, we can't get to 15. I agree, you know, once we look at numbers, that becomes, it becomes astronomical. Is that 12% the maximum you feel we can get to on seasonal?
I feel it's the maximum we can get to seasonal and still have you fund my general employee chart. I'm balancing needs.
Okay.
Okay, so I've got Claudia and then Chris.
So, and maybe this is more of a question, since John's sitting here, and he has most of the seasonal employees, if I'm correct. But what kind, I mean, my impression is, is that the seasonal employees are young kids. So what, what skilled labor, I mean, I, I, I mean, you know, 924 is ridiculous, regardless of its, but what skilled labor are we hiring for seasonal workers? I mean, specifically, what do they do? That's skilled labor.
If John wants to address that, I'm fine with it.
John, if you want to come up here, but I think that's a moving target. If you want to come and explain why your seasonal employees do, I think that they would change because streets have some, and PRT has some, and stuff like that.
From John's perspect, from John's department, what skilled labor are you hiring that is seasonal?
So when you say skilled, I guess we're probably more up into the PO4, 5, and 6 type of areas. Just for an example, a gang mower operator, construction laborer 3, variable-hour zookeeper, code enforcement assistant, in outdoor rec, like an excursion leader, rental equipment coordinator, head lifeguards, cashier managers, irrigation system specialists, groomer, trails, maintenance coordinator, assistant sports pro, you know, these types.
Okay, so, so none of these people are inexperienced? I mean, if I'm hiring a cashier manager, I must, if I'm going to hire somebody and put them in a management position, my assumption is, is that you're hiring somebody with experience, and they've been a lead cashier somewhere else, and they've, right? Is that, am I?
Or we've groomed them internally, and they're ready for that next opportunity.
Okay, so, so I'm, I'm not off the mark.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's all, I, I was just trying to get some, get some understanding.
Chris, you had a.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my questions today are, I probably don't even know enough to be able to frame them well, so I apologize for that. But I'm wondering what, I mean, John's department is where we heard the, the biggest seasonal problem, I think. I mean, at least if memory serves, that, that seems to be where it's at crisis levels. And so I'm wondering if there's anything we can do that would bump up the top end of that, of that seasonal scale that wouldn't have to necessarily start, so just like you did a, a pressure point, I think you called it, a pressure point, 6.75, which was more than either the 3.5 or the 2.25. I'm wondering if there's a similar pressure point particularly relative to parks, but who knows? That could also somehow be addressed without having it have to ricochet completely back through the entire chart?
I think just depending on pay to fix the problem in parks with hiring seasonals is an inadequate response. There needs to be some other actions that need to occur to modernize some of our hiring practices that would help make it more understandable as to what our needs are.
Can I get an example of that?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm.
High school students do not want to work 40 hours a week, starting at 6:00 AM.
Okay.
So maybe you adjust the.
I, I just wanted to understand what you were referring to, outdated hiring practices, and that makes perfect sense, because I don't know.
Cultural shift.
There is. I mean, many high school students take summer courses or SAT, ACT prep, so they are not available for 40 hours. A lot of them do, you know, sports that go year-round at this point.
Right. Well, plus it's vacation, and you're a kid.
Yeah.
At 6:00 AM, let's be honest here.
The 6:00 AM is kind of a big one. Let's talk about some of the costs in the departments. And I want to sit down and talk about these individually, because one of you is going to use a word I don't like you to use on the dais, and I'll let you know if you use it. So, Animal Services says they can absorb a 12% increase to the table within their current fiscal year '23 estimated operating, this line of 88,000. It doesn't mean that they have extra money. They have no slush. What they have is, they haven't been fully staffed enough to know what their actual needs are. When they come back in '24, they will let us know what their head count looks like with this increase in pay. Again, Parks has been making do, and they are really trying to do it again for fiscal year '23 for us. They're going to try to absorb that 12% operating within the 336,000 that they currently have in that light item. Will they need an increase in '24? I would guess so, when they have a better understanding of what they can fill. The increased ask to the general fund is $6,676. And then I broke these down. Ambulance is in here, this is something that Chief O'Hern and I will have to sit down and address. They are not on this pay scale. They're a little bit different colored cat. The enterprise funds, they're absorbing those because they haven't been filling them. They are not finding the skilled positions that they need, and the pay is too low. Science and environment said that they can absorb the cost. Recreation does need some help. These are very heavily used programs, and they are running a lot on seasonals. So the increased cost there is 53,000. And then special revenue funds, we're asking for an increase at 27,000. If council approves this, we will go in and manually adjust those account lines so that it is reflected in the budgets, in the budget itself.
Claudia?
Can I ask, I don't know who can answer this question for me, but how much does the county pay for, for the ambulance part? I mean, what, what can we expect for them, you know, to offset? Does anybody have a, a number?
For these seasonal employees?
Or just in general?
It's 100%.
Okay, so the county pays 100% of the amb, so all these ambulance numbers that we're seeing, the county's footing the bill for that?
It's just a pass-through.
Okay.
Basically, we're showing you what we're going to be expending for budgetary authority, but all of that is offset with, you know, as part of the contract.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I knew exactly. Thank you, appreciate that, chief.
Question, oh, Chris, sorry, Chris, I didn't see.
Yeah, so the only thing, I mean, in the short time that I've been part of council, every year, what we've heard from Parks and Rec is, we'll absorb it, we'll absorb it. We can handle. We can handle it. We can do it. And I, you know, and we've not heard that as loudly and consistently from other departments and we've not heard it at all from some departments. And so I... I mean, I'm in a frame of mind, given the fact that our parks and so forth are part of the very public face of our community. And we've gotten some pretty clear feedback that part of our public face has some blemishes on it. I just have significant reservations about a department that has been stepping up and sucking it up over and over and over during my short tenure to expect them to do that even one more year. I just have real reservations about that.
Questions?
I came to the numbers. I reached out to the department heads.
I understand. Yeah, I'm not suggesting that you did anything. I guess maybe, John, I'm saying from my perspective, you know, thank you for stepping up and sucking it up, you know, over these two budget cycles. But I've got real reservations about going yet another because as we've said... Oops, sorry. As we've said about this building, you know, it doesn't... Just because we don't do it doesn't mean it doesn't need to be done. And we have maintenance issues that are mounting rapidly and we're going to come to a crunch point is what I'm concerned about.
Josh?
I think my understanding is that the reason, John, you can absorb it is because you have so many vacant positions. Is that correct?
Kind of the thought process on absorbing for fiscal '23 is we've got probably 78 to 80% of our seasonal hires are in those P1 through P3. The... I think I agree with Heather that the 12% is not going to solve all the problems. I think we remain... That's our most, I guess, uncompetitive levels are P1 through P3 through the department. So, you know, the calculus there was, okay, we executed part-time staff in Parks last year at 81% because we were so short-staffed. So I think, can we do it for '23? Sure. But I agree, maybe it puts us a little bit behind the eight ball again. At some point, if this is a multi-step process where it increases year to year, at some point, we're going to start hopefully attracting again and then we're going to blow through those resources if we absorb too many years. But for '23, I was comfortable for cemetery and parks because of those reasons. I don't know that we get a ton more applications with the 12% increase in P1 through P3. I hope so, but I just don't know. I think I agree with Heather that it doesn't solve all the problems, but you've got to start somewhere.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Josh? I would move that we advise Human Resources to begin working off of this chart for budget predictions.
Section.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
All right, my last action item. This is something different that HR is bringing forward.
Hold on, we're going to take a second break for a minute.
A 30-second break.
We're going to take a couple-minute break so you can... Don't have to rush. You know what? I'm going to because... Thank you for staying with us through the break. We'll go ahead and continue on with item number five.
It's in special. All right, my last action item, so the last amount of money I'm asking you to spend today. For fiscal year '23, we would like to separate the seasonal and the variable hour scale. That sounds odd, but we do have year-round positions that have a full-time equivalent that are currently paid off the part-time scale, the seasonal scale. An example would be a transit driver. You know, half of Skylar's headcount is part-time drivers who are not receiving the same pay as their counterparts who are full-time. These positions are not medical benefit eligible. They are currently Percy eligible and will remain Percy eligible. Overscheduling of the positions can trigger the Affordable Care Act, which means we would have to offer them benefits, but that happens on a very limited basis, only a couple times since ACA went into place. There's actually five positions. I left one off the chart. I just conferred with John. We would like to take these positions and place them on the full-time chart so they're receiving the same pay without the medical benefit side. At Animal Services, we have animal care assistants who are doing the same work as our animal care specialists. These are the positions that are working with the animals in the kennels, caring for them and cleaning those spaces. In Transit, we have the transit drivers. In City Hall, we have a variable hour custodian that's doing the same as full-time work. In Building, we have our fill-in building officials. And I've meant to change that officer on there like 10 times that I've presented it and have yet to correct it. So there's my typo.
What is that?
Building, the fill-in building.
No, no, but what is a fill-in building?
So when one of our inspectors goes out on vacation...
Oh, we have like some a stand-in?
We have a licensed person who can come in and do those inspections. There's always one. We are already paying this person off the hybrid scale, just so that we can attract someone to remain in it. We would like to move these people plus the year-round zookeeper that works on the limited, the more limited hours. So that's the five positions we've identified. To be clear, there are other positions in the city that work year-round. Lifeguards move from Ross Park Pool to the Community Rec Center, but there is no full-time equivalent. It's the same thing with fitness and class instructors over at the Community Recreation Center and library pages. Again, they might work year-round, but they do not do full-time equivalent work. They would remain on the seasonal scale.
Does an animal care assistant have the same training and experience as an animal care specialist?
Yep.
So they're equal in every way other than the scale they're on?
All of these positions have equal responsibility.
So why is one called a specialist?
Because one's a variable hour employee and not full-time.
Oh, got it. Okay, so that's the only delineation.
That is the only delineation.
It's mind-boggling.
It is mind-boggling.
That's stupid.
So Skylar and I have actually been talking about this for a couple of years because transit is where we have our biggest problem. We depend on those part-time drivers to make us deliver our services. We would like to make sure that they're paid correctly.
And this will really help? Skylar's nodding yes.
A little more excited nod, Skylar.
So I've got Claudia.
So go to the... I want to see what the specialist is getting paid and what the assistant is getting paid right now. I'm just...
Holly can come up here and answer those questions.
I'm just curious to see what the differential is there.
All right, Holly, dazzle us.
I'm Holly Harnsberger, Compensation Specialist with Human Resources. I just need to look at my K and L real quick.
Okay.
So currently, the animal care assistant is being... They're P2 on our part-time scale, which is starting at 867 an hour, where their full-time counterpart, the animal care specialist, starts out at 1361 an hour.
What?
Yep.
What?
Yep.
Which is why we've identified the key positions that have the full-time equivalents.
Jeez, that is...
Josh? Holly, are you the other person who's been working on this with Heather? Heather said there's been two.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your work.
Thanks.
With that, I would move that we advise Human Resources to proceed using these charts in the upcoming budget calculations.
So we have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheatham.
Wait, is there a numbers page?
There is not a numbers page and I'm going to explain that. First off, I'd like us to add the zookeeper that is not on the chart, just a little bit different than your motion.
Just wait, just Holly, please indulge me. What is the...
Transit. Do the transit driver.
What is the transit? No, I want to know what a temporary zookeeper is making versus... Because, you know, shoveling polar bear...
Well, we don't have polar bears.
Okay, shoveling elk?
There you go.
Or grizzly bear.
Or bear scat, yeah.
So they're at a P3 currently, which starts at 955. And this one's going to blow your mind.
This one hurts.
The full-time zookeeper is at an H7, I believe, which starts at 1906.
What? And they're doing the exact same job, only one is full-time and one is... That is some serious bullshit.
Well, let's go with scat.
That's like some serious bull scat.
So I don't actually have a cost for you because I need to sit down and break down everyone's hours. Skylar did that analysis for me before I played with the scale and he thought he was very close to be able to absorb it within his operating.
Wow.
I say that with hesitation.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is the motion maker okay with adding zoo?
Yeah, sorry.
And the second is also...
Okay.
So we have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
What was that, on the microphone?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Am I voting to build with this? Yes.
With this, yeah.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, those are all your action items. Let me go back to here.
Oh, I had to see if you had any questions, but you guys have done all the action items.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Then we'll move to Gen Item 7 is Revenue Projections. Mayor Vlad will give a presentation.
Do you want me to pull that up on here?
Um, yeah.
That'd be great, since you're sitting there.
I didn't know if you were coming up.
All right.
I'm the mouse again. I just really like being up here and it's so much fun. Awesome.
So council, you have two different sheets in front of you. Number one, you have this sheet here that looks like this. It's got all the revenue, the balance, reserves, the revenue reserves. Chris, you've been asking for these and the council's been interested in them and so we've got that for you with the different departments and the funds and things like that. So I'm not going to talk about that a whole lot unless there are any questions.
I'd just like to understand what the process is that... Because some, whatever we want to call it, money left over at the end of the year, unexpended money from a department, some of it ends up in 78, as I understand it, and some of it seems to end up in the general fund. Can you just clarify that for me, somebody?
I can sure take a stab at that, yes.
Thanks.
So Fund 78 was set up, like I mentioned, for the continued capital, big things. Because there isn't another place for us in the general fund, we could just have something called general fund, like Airport does, and all of the departments in general fund could just be under four line items. It's not very transparent, so we break it out to departments. But ultimately, when we leave money on the table, the general fund gets the money. The department cannot have that money.
Right.
So in order for us to have that money, if we want to save, then I have to make a specific request and it has to be transferred into, we've chosen Fund 78.
And we do that through budget amendments.
And we do that through budget amendments, or we can also do that, like my budget ask for our department for next year has $2,000 that I'm asking you for permission to build my budget with, to purposefully transfer to that. So there are ways, different ways we can do that. We're not sure why, without the knowledge of the previous, how many CFOs available, funds that already have their own reserves, like Airport and Science and Environment and Recreation are in Fund 78. We don't know why that's happening. They have their own place to have their reserves. So we're doing the best we can with the whys and accounting for everything, but there are still some weird things that we don't know why they were in there. I know that there was a very good reason for previous CFOs, whether it was back 20 years or back two years, that it was allowed to happen, but we don't have that knowledge. We just know it's there.
So I can understand, you know, like Airport being different because they have so many grants and, you know, federal monies and so forth, and I can understand. I don't know, I assume maybe Transit is similar.
Is a different fund as well.
Why Science and Environment?
They are a different fund also. They're 017, Fund 17. And so they have their own... And again, why they've been allowed to save in Fund 78, we're not sure, where they have their own fund, which is completely separate from everyone else. It's one of those things.
And that's just because that's how we did it?
At some point in time, some CFO allowed the departments, the funds that have their own funds, to start using Fund 78 as well.
Right.
Hopefully, we can, now that we've identified, because it was a lot of work for departments to go backwards, this was again, something that previous CFOs kept on a, in a different location. And we've been through all files that we can and could not find where they were keeping track of these things. And so the departments have had to go back and rebuild Fund 78 to the best of our ability. And that's where we know it matches with our cash reserves that we've been able to find. We're hoping that the funds like Recreation and Airport and Science and Environment no longer contribute to Fund 78 once those monies are gone and start doing it all in their reserve accounts.
So...
Under their own specific fund number.
So why do some funds have their own reserve account or their own account and others don't? I mean, I guess that's part of what I'm trying to understand, like what is it about Science and Environment that says it's essentially operating as a self-contained unit from year to year? I mean, how do they carry over money from year to year? I thought...
So when Hannah underspend, so possibly she went out, she budgeted for a $5,000 purchase, but she ended up getting a $5,000 grant.
Right.
So you allocated money from, for Science and Environment, essentially $5,000 more than she needed. Because she has that money allocated to her then, and she didn't spend it, it will go into her reserve account, which you can see on that giant slide.
Right. But I guess my question is, why does that happen that way, whereas another department, it goes into the general fund and is then transferred to 78?
So the departments in the general fund don't exist.
Right.
Essentially.
Right, exactly.
It just goes to the general fund's bottom line and we can all take advantage of that. But when the chief comes to you and says, I want $2 million to buy a tower truck, and you go, oh, that's a great idea, and you sweep from the general fund...
Right.
Also technically swept the $4,000 that I have saved.
No, I understand all of that.
So then that way...
That's why we do the transfer to 78.
That's why we're doing the transfer to 78.
And I understand that.
Yes.
But I guess my question is even more basic than that. Why does Science and Environment have their own fund where they can carry over without going through the general fund process and other people don't have that process? That's my question.
Isn't that the first thing that you answered? I mean, it's just to... My understanding is you said that CFOs made decisions at some point that made it that way, and we don't know all the reasons why they did.
Yeah.
Is that...
And to be honest, I can't answer the technical accounting questions as to why previous CFOs have decided that...
Oh, no.
That Animal Services should be in the general fund and not separated out into their own fund.
Right, fall back in the game.
All I can try to answer is, we do have very specific funds. They're on your charter accounts. They're on your reserve spreadsheet. Those funds are allowed to generate reserves if they overspend or not. Some of them don't. Not being an accountant, not being CFO.
Sure, sure, no.
Doing the math.
I just thought there was a stat...
Well, some CFO back in the day made those determinations.
Correct.
This department will have its own fund, this department will be part of 70 of the general fund, and nobody knows historically when that happened or why.
My impression was there was statutory language that said that money had to go back into...
Unless they had their own.
Into the general fund and then from there it could be parceled out. That's where I... Why I'm confused, because it appears to me as a layperson that the statute says something statute says something that we're not doing, and I'm just confused.
So, Chris, maybe I can answer that question a little bit. Uh, I'm sure it won't be in full. As you know, you've got this
Right.
here in front of you. If you, if you look at this, it's all listed under the general fund, and the fund number is zero-zero-one, general fund. If you move to Senator, to, uh, Science and Environment, that's, you kind of picked that one out of the crowd here, Science and Environment is funded by our enterprise funds.
Okay.
And so we cannot mix Science and Environment money with general fund money.
Got it, of course.
And so that one right there, I'm assuming that's why they, she has, Science and Environment has their own thing.
That makes sense.
But you can give her general fund money, should she come and say, "I don't have enough in my reserve." Levi, and water, they don't wanna transfer to me.
But accounting-wise, they can't be mixed, and I understand that.
Yes, I apologize.
I didn't know that they got some of their money
It's clicking in my brain.
From, from enterprise.
Same with utility billing, same with, um, you know, there are several that we can't...
Perfect, thank you.
I have a question on this, Brian.
Okay, which one is this?
What is column, what is?
What are you looking at?
I'm looking at the big piece of paper.
Okay.
What are the two columns with the pink?
With the...
Just the shorts, the short Reader's Digest version of what those columns represent.
Okay, your excess shortfall after reserve.
So after, after, after this department puts their twenty-five percent in, this is what they're short? Is that what you're saying? I just wanna understand what I'm looking at.
What do these two columns represent?
So the last two columns, what do they represent?
No, not the last two, the ones with the pink.
Yeah, the, the, the pink. Anne, can you help us on that?
Yes, that's my understanding, council member, is that, um, after there is the required reserves, that would be a shortfall. A lot of the departments do have explanations for that. There's a lot of, like, grant funding that hasn't been come, that hasn't come in, and we don't account for that until we actually have it physically in hand, those types of things.
Um, could you, could somebody read me, because this is cut off on, at least on my copy, uh, WPC Debt Service Fund sixty? There seems to be like a notation under, you know, under notes, but I can't read. It just says, all I can see is need to from year... Could you tell me what that would, that would say?
Yes, let me...
That's the only one that's cut off.
Fund.
That's what this is, yep, okay. It says, "Transfer in, uh, three-point-one million, be, uh, budget adjustment February, need to roll year for negative balance fund."
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
What's the what, just out of curiosity, what's, um, what, uh, do we have a bond, a water bond out, or what is the debt that we're servicing?
The water bond debt is what we're servicing. The citizens voted on that in two thousand and six?
And that's the one where there's still...
Two thousand and eight.
Where the money has not yet been expended, part of it was for water rights, that's that one. Do we have any plan, like, since that's pretty, I mean, two thousand and six is quite a while ago, do we have any plan for doing something with that money that's, other than, you know, building a new building or something?
Well, we don't have any plans for building a building. The plan is to, if there is a water right that is beneficial for the city, then we would have that money to be able to purchase that.
Because I thought it was to put money in the, money, to put, essentially money, to put water in the river.
Death is...
But I, I don't know. It's been very confusing, because if you ask fifty people, there are fifty explanations of what that bond was all about.
I think that's how clear the bond was when it was passed, too, so...
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director and City Engineer. So, yeah, that was the, the bond that was passed to secure water rights, as well as do a, a water project. Um, that bond was originally intended to purchase water rights from the Chesterfield Reservoir, and then that deal fell through. Um, since that time, every, every year, we get two or three different, um, water rights that people come to us with, and we consider those and determine whether or not they're gonna give us a beneficial use or not. Um, we just really haven't found anything very large out there yet that, that really makes sense for us to purchase, and so we don't wanna buy something that's not gonna have any beneficial use to us. So as those opportunities come up, we'll continue to evaluate them, and then that money's available to do that purchase.
And, and, and when you say beneficial to the city, I mean, was it in fact, part of it supposed to buy water rights for the, the actual river?
Yes.
I mean, water, okay, so, so that part is correct. It's not for water rights to ensure drinking water or something like that.
The original intent was that it would be, um, intended to, to try to get more water in the river, um, but that, that's what it was intended for.
Right, and I assume, I mean, we're not, are we trying, I mean, it's obviously more efficient if you can find one water right that would get her done, but water rights, as we know, are, you know, increasingly scarce, and they tend to be small anymore. And of course, the, the ones that are available also generally tend to be the more recent ones that, in current conditions. So, s... anyway, um, I don't know. What are our chances, or is that money gonna be sitting here again in another, what, eighteen years, seventeen years?
Um, you know, like I say, we, we get a couple different offers a year, and we evaluate those and determine whether they're, they're a good buy for the city or not. We have purchased a couple different things, but, uh, we really haven't any, had any large, large opportunities yet.
A couple of things that we look at as a city when you're looking at those water rights is, number one, a priority date. Number two, what kind of water is that water? I mean, is it irrigation? Is it groundwater? Is it surface water? What kind of water it is? And so we're, we receive all the time inquiries from people that wanna sell us the city water rights, but like you said, oftentimes, those are nineteen eighty-nine water rights, and that does nothing for the city. It's just a waste of our money to do that. Uh, irrigation water is also another one that's just temporary. It's a, for the irrigation system, and so we, we get, um, a lot of inquiries for people to sell us their water. It's just not the water that's gonna be beneficial for the, the citizens, regardless of if it's for the river or not.
Just for grins and giggles, when you get those inquiries, I would love to know, I mean, I'd love to get a copy.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah. We can, will, will you work with legal, because he typically goes to legal with...
I mean, I don't, I can, you can redact the potential seller. I don't care about any of that. I'm just, you know, more interested in the, the actual technicalities, so to speak.
Another thing we look at is price, too, because, because people own the water, sometimes think that their irrigation, um, surface irrigation water is worth, you know,
Right.
gold. Gold, and it just isn't, so...
It's, it kind of goes back to something that, in a different arena, that Councilwoman Lurick, uh, said yesterday. It's, it's like, water rights are probably not gonna get cheaper and more plentiful in the foreseeable future, probably forever, but in the foreseeable future. And so, you know, I'm wondering if we're, by being, by trying to be, um, frugal, you know, and efficient with our money, if we're actually maybe digging ourselves into a bit of a, or have dug ourselves into a bit of a hole. It's, it's just, I don't expect you to answer that. You can't, but it's just an observation that that's, this is probably not an arena where prices are going to fall, um, anytime soon.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then, council, let's look at the other large paper there. Uh, what we've done is we've put in here, if you look, over at the three percent of the highest budget of the last three years, uh, the allowable taxable dollar amount that the city could take would be nine-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars, if, uh, the council, um, elected to take the entire three percent. New construction is, uh, at one-thirty-six-six-eight-four. I believe that's what we had last year. It's just very, very conservative. We're still waiting for annexation, and the county does not have that for us yet. I might just add one thing with all of these numbers we have here. We've had the city, the county, AIC, and the State Tax Commission, all four, look at these numbers and, and work on these numbers, so that we were as close as we could get. Now, recognizing that it's still a little fluid, um, but that's what, what we've got. If you take a, a step down from that, you've got, we'll subtract the three-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-eleven dollars. Uh, the state frontloads that dollar amount in the, in the highest budget year taxes, and so we will receive that three-fifty-three. We just have to subtract it. We can't double-dip and take it twice. And so we will, we will see that. The new property of, uh, new property tax available is seven-thirty-eight-nine-fifty-nine is what the new, new is, and so...
Could you just repeat the, the comment about double-dipping? What are you talking about?
So the, the three-fifty-three in red, the, that we have to subtract, we would have to subtract that from, uh, the nine-fifty-five and the one-thirty-six, because the state is, has loaded that in upfront and...
So it'd be including it twice?
Yes, we would be including it twice if we included that in that. So that's why you see that number in yellow, seven-thirty-eight-nine-fifty-nine. That would be the max added dollars that we would, we would have. Um, my suggestion would be that the council, if you approve that, the, the, I mean, this is really, truly kind of my suggestion, is we plan on the three percent, see where we are. We've, we've, uh, approved a number of things, and remember, this is also fluid, and so it's not, it, it can be changed at the end of the month if we need to. My recommendation would be a one percent, uh, foregone for O and M. Uh, that one percent, we would add to the base of next year's three percent. That would be three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. I would also recommend the three percent foregone for capital. That does not add to the base. That, that is one and done, and that three percent would be the same as the three percent that we have here at nine-fifty-five-six-eight-six. Uh, there's a lot of things that we need to do, and so as a tax ask, that kind of right there is, would be my recommendation, uh, as we move forward with that. And so we'll, I'll be asking for what the council's desire is with that, but before we do that, um, okay, if, if we do that, if that happened, the property tax ask this year would be twenty-three-million-two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-and-seventy dollars. That's that line, the bar in the green.
Just for the general fund.
Just for the general fund. Uh, then, uh, we need decisions, uh, on, uh, these, uh, other, the revenue sharing, liquor sales, um, the franchise fees and things like that. Uh, revenue sharing, uh, according to AIC, it looks like it will be six-million-six-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-and-fifty-three dollars. I wanna remind you, that is a, probably a conservative thing. They never wanna go out on a limb, and so that's conservative, so I would anticipate seeing a little more than that, but, um, for our budgeting purposes, that's probably what I would, uh, account for, or at least, uh, put in there. Uh, liquor sales, uh, as you can see, our liquor sales, uh, seven-thirty-seven. Now, the, the AIC does not really weigh in on that because it differs from city to city, and so, well, that, this is kind of our guess. It's also very conservative, I think, if you look back to, to FY twenty-one, we, we planned on, uh, seven, uh, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand. We haven't bounced up to that level yet. Last year, we budgeted six-ninety-eight. This year, I think a conservative number is seven-thirty-seven. Uh, though I'm not a drinker, I don't participate in that part of it. I think that, that there are a lot, that are participating a lot more.
I, I, I've done my share, but...
Thank you.
For this fund, but, but I'm just, I, so I'm just curious, is that just, where, where is that number coming from? I mean, where are you just kind of like deciding, seven-thirty-seven sounds good? I mean...
We looked at trends of, historical trends of where that came from and, uh, what has happened in the past, and last year, we just, this, that's what we budgeted last year.
That's what we budgeted. So what was, so the act, what was the actual last year?
Mayor, if I, if I can.
Yes.
So for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, you can see that our liquor sales came in at, uh, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two.
I was living here then.
Me, too. Um, for the current budget year, we went down a little bit, given some of the legislative things, um, and then we're bouncing back up to seven-thirty-seven. Where that number comes from is, while the Association of Idaho Cities does not make a prediction on our liquor sales, where they will on some other funds, they do track what cities have gotten. So they have given us spreadsheets that show what we have received for the past years, and then right now, they are projecting, based upon current payments to cities, where we should end for this current twenty-twenty-two, and this seven-thirty-seven is actually where they're predicting that we will end, based upon what we've already received for the year for twenty-twenty-two. So we just wanna take that number projection and plan for it for next year, knowing it's probably also low.
Do you have on that paper that you're looking at, what we got, actually got in twenty-two?
So far this year, we have received...
It's on here.
Oh, is that the two-ninety-four? I'm sorry.
That's the two-ninety-four.
I'm sorry.
As of the date I, I put this together, yes.
My eyes are blazing over.
That's okay. There's lots of numbers in spreadsheets.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what we have so far. I believe this week, we actually may have received another payment, but I did not put that in.
Okay.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make the foregone numbers make sense. I went back through, um, the past couple of votes, you know, to make foregone available, and I can't, I can't, I mean, last year, it looked like it was, you know, four million and something, um, was where we were gonna be, and I, I just, can, can somebody do the progression and do the math for me about where, what did we, what did, what are we using for our starting point, and then, you know, what have we added and subtracted and done whatever?
So according to the State Tax Commission, what we have on hand for foregone use, for use, is the three-million-three-hundred-seventy-two-four-eight-eight.
Okay, so that comes from the Tax Commission. Got it, thank you, appreciate it.
They provide a lot of great information, and they're super helpful. I can't tell you how appreciative I am of the county, the state, and AIC for answering my bazillion emails, phone calls, text messages, to try to put this together. This is, again, another thing that the CFOs in previous years have all done in a silo, and staff and I are, are doing our very best.
Well, thank you very much. I know it's, probably has not been, um, as much fun as you hoped you would have, but thank you.
You're welcome. I, I joke that this year is group participation budget build. Everybody's learning a little something.
Rick?
I am confused. One percent of three-three-seven-two-four-eight-eight looks like more than three-eighteen-five-sixty-two.
Correct. We cannot take that one percent straight off of what our balance is. We have to take the one percent off of our highest of three budget years.
So it's off of that?
Off of the thirty-one-eight-fifty-six.
Okay. Claudia?
Can, I mean, I understand that the Tax Commission gave you this foregone number, so it's obviously the correct number. Does anybody have any idea how the last, in November, or November meeting, we were told that the foregone would be four-million-eighty? I mean, does anybody know how that, no, okay, that, that, good enough. Good enough.
Nope.
I, I believe the Tax Commission. I'm just confused as to, you know, you can't just grab numbers out of the air, so, okay.
No idea.
Yeah, that's what they have. Uh, gas franchise fee, uh, our recommendation is three-twenty-four. Cable franchise fee, we've dropped a little bit. Historically, that has continued to drop, and so we've dropped it down to one-thirty-five, opposed to the one-four, uh, the one-forty-three that we budgeted last year. And then our electric, uh, electric, uh, franchise fee at four-thirty-five is what our recommendation is. Basically the same as last year. So...
What's water lease?
Water leases, we have, uh, with the water from our, from Palisage, we typically lease water for that.
Oh, but we had to give it back.
We gave it back last year. Uh, we're not looking at any leases unless, you know...
There's no water?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So there's that. Yes, Linda?
Um, I was just gonna ask a procedural question. Do we need...
I was just gonna ask a procedural question. Do we need to approve these estimates? Or do you want to get through the whole thing?
I would love it if you wanted to approve them. I would love it if you wanted to wait. It doesn't matter to me.
I will make a movement to approve these estimates under the general fund section as proposed.
So, the, the revenue, the liquor, the franchise fees?
Yep.
Include the taxes?
That did not include the taxes.
Not include taxes, okay.
That was just these funds in my mind.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Right, that we're, we're building it based on these estimates.
Okay, I have a motion by Lurick.
Rick seconded.
Oh, you seconded, Eric. So, we have a motion and a second. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
So, are we saying that we're gonna build, that we, we are saying yes, go ahead, Mayor, and build your budget, including taking forgone?
No, no, this, what we're talking about is this general, from-
This part, okay, all right.
This general fund only.
Just making sure I knew exactly what I was voting, okay.
Ortega?
Yes, I see what you were concerned about.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then, as we jump down to street fund, this is the best numbers that we can, we can come up with as well, and as a reminder, the county did help us with the county road and bridge. The estimate would be 800,000. The highway distribution number is estimated at 3,177,496. And then, our regular distribution is looking at, the recommendation is 2,120,644. And then, we've got, because of the House bill, if you remember, I think Tom mentioned House Bill 312, the share of that, the city's share of that bill is 666,000, and House Bill 362 was another House bill that they have passed. Our, according to AIC, our share of that, looks like it should be around 389.
So, this 30, this 3177 number, highway distribution, is that also, Anne, based on where we are year-to-date?
It's based on, no, the 3177 is based on AIC's projections. That is something that they do project for us, working with the state ITD.
Okay.
Other questions on street fund? Projections? If we're-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move that we approve the street fund projections for budget calculation purposes for the fiscal year.
Second. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, and then, Council, we need to jump back up to the taxes, if the, the tax ask, if the council so desires to do what is in beige, the green is what the effect will be. Is that correct?
That's correct. So, the green projections on what it would be, you need to consider as estimates, because it depends on if liability came in and asked for a little more, then obviously, I need to shift the percentages that liability would get to cover that, unless you choose to reduce their budget to match what, what this was. I, for simplicity purposes, took last year's L2 form. We figured out what percentage each tax fund received from that, and then I applied it to what new tax money we would get and split that out. So, you can see that, you know, for example, liability is gonna get 14,700 more. Those numbers can be fluid. They're just examples of what would happen should you choose to take this, but the number itself is correct. We also have to take into account there are statutory limitations for certain, for our, for tax funds, and I'm working on getting those numbers put together. Hopefully, I will have those to you by the end of the month when we go through this again.
Mr. Mayor, I have a procedural question.
Yes.
Assuming we approve these numbers in beige in order to build the budget, what will happen then is later in the month, we will be brought back with the, kind of the budget build of all the asks, and where that matches up to these numbers, at which point, we can say we have X amount in excess that we've collected in property taxes, therefore, we can choose not to take the 3% forgone that we may have approved for the budget calculation, calculation purposes. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
So, this is the, we are now talking about the forgone, or we're talking about new construction?
Talking about the entire, the taxes themselves. If you, if, if, the question is, is if we approve these numbers right now, we would build the budget using these numbers. At the end of the month, these numbers, if the council so desires to not take all of this, then what happens is we reduce this number at the end of the month. If the council says, we only want to take half of this, for example, then our budget will be built on that number, and then the council would have the ability to increase it at the end of this month or decrease it yet again. So, yes.
But, but it would be building it, including the 318,562 and the 955,686, which is 1% forgone and 3% forgone?
It would include building it with those two numbers, as well as the 3% and the new construction.
Yes.
And hopefully, with any luck, we may have some numbers for annexation, but we don't know that yet. So, I got Linda and then Josh.
And I, did you have a question?
If, no, go ahead.
I was gonna go ahead and make a motion.
We got a question here.
So, then, we're talking about building the budget with 7%, plus new construction. Am I right? 3% plus 1% plus 3% plus new construction.
Yes, if you want to look at it that way. I mean, if you're adding the percentages up, that's, that's what you've got.
Just the, the comment I'd like to make is that I think that we've seen a lot of different asks, and right now, you know, we've seen those asks, and it's really easy to say, oh, all these things are great things, but it, it's necessary that we see them relative to a larger picture of, of budget and, and projected income. And so, given the chance, the fact that we, you know, have the opportunity to look at some of those things and, and decide and evaluate the asks, I think it's worthwhile, given that I've heard very little opposition from Council on any matter that's come before us in department presentations, that they be given the opportunity to put those into the budget and show us what those numbers would look like. And that's why I would feel comfortable giving them the full ask that's coming from the, the mayor at this time, so that we can then truly evaluate those asks that Council has said all week are noble and worthwhile asks, and evaluate them in the broader picture of the city budget.
Okay, Linda, you had something?
And I agree with that, and I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we build the budget using the taxes as proposed here on this sheet.
Second.
So, I have one more question for you, Brian.
Yes.
So, this number?
Yes. The 32,595?
Is all of this, including the beige?
It's, no, it's all the green.
It's all the, it's only the green?
Correct. It's only the tax ask for the green.
So, if we add the beige, we're adding another 12,700 and?
The only thing that you would need to ask-
I mean, 1 million?
To add to that would be the forgone balances. It, it does incorporate the 3% plus the new construction.
Okay, so then we'd be adding 1,274,000 for $248.
But again, this is to build the budget, and then we can look at all, I'm not saying this in reference to you. I'm just clarifying that this is to build the budget, so then we can, as Josh said, look at all the different asks in this context, and then see where we're gonna go from there.
Okay, any other questions, any other comments on building the budget using these numbers? With that in mind, then, I have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mansfield. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
No, I can't open the door to forgone. I mean, I, I understand and, and value our city employees, and I understand our recruitment problem, but I also understand there's, there are tens of thousands of people out there who are going to get no raise. They're gonna get no step. Their inflationary costs are equal to those experienced by the city employees, and I cannot go on record as opening the door to forgone. I would rather see what the shortfall is with the asks and proceed that way, so I vote no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, with that, Council, the staff has some direction. We've got some numbers we can put down. At the end of the month, we will be meeting again so we can see where we are in the, with everything out there. Thank you very much, Council. With that, we are adjourned.